We're getting ready to feed the best for Thanksgiving, uh, for, for, uh, Fourth of July, and every other holiday that we deal with.
I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
And that mural and the new square can be found near the corner of Central Avenue and 51st Street in South LA. While LA Mayor Eric Garcetti hopes more youth jobs will help reverse an uptick in city crime, Gil Reyes reports on a number of strategies, including one successful summer park program.
It's a ray of hope following increases in violent crime. The anti-gang program known as Summer Night Lights is returning, keeping city parks open late with fun activities for youth. This helps ensure they're supervised off the streets and out of trouble.
Even with an uptick in crime in the city, 20 of the 32 sites actually saw, uh, no increase or a decrease last summer against the trend of the entire city.
Mayor Eric Garcetti talks to nonprofits in downtown about a 20% increase in the city's violent crime last year. This uptick, however, avoided most of the parks participating in Summer Night Lights. The mayor believes keeping people engaged is the secret. His strategy includes adding more summer youth jobs when school's out. This year, 15,000 city-sponsored youth jobs are planned. That's 5,000 more than last summer. Many people blame recent crime increases to state laws that freed much of the prison population and did so without adequate job placement and mental health programs to help former felons re-enter society. With few options, many people say the formerly incarcerated are committing crimes again, reversing what had been years of decreasing crime numbers.
If we don't get right the re-entry piece of this for our young people and for those who are coming out of criminal justice system, it'll swing back the other way.
That's why the mayor wants former felons to be among the first to fill 5,000 new civil service positions. He's asking the job placement and addiction specialists gathered here to help the formerly incarcerated re-enter the workforce.
And believing in her and believing in him to actually move forward and to transform their lives. You're the angels in the city of angels who are doing that, and you can count on City Hall to be your partner every step of the way.
In downtown LA, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
In 2007, Mayor Garcetti launched what eventually became the Summer Night Lights program. It was initially called "At the Park After Dark." Garcetti launched it when he was a councilman. While the first-of-its-kind exhibit is on display as part of the kickoff for LGBTQ Heritage Month at City Hall, Rasha Goel has more.
This Washington Post article shows same-sex couples rejoicing and celebrating their new rights as a couple. Their exuberance was shared throughout the country as states, one by one, legalize same-sex marriages, and their joy now being recognized at this "Winning the Freedom to Marry" exhibit at City Hall. They are news articles and images that represent...
A number of different days, a number of different eras, leading up to the pivotal moment on the Supreme Court that made freedom to marriage the law of the land.
The exhibit at City Hall East Bridge Gallery contains a collection of the front pages of major newspapers across the country highlighting same-sex rulings across the states. And on June 26, 2015, the Supreme Court gave its stamp of approval nationwide.
It's also a reminder of the individuals, especially when you have the historic pictures of people who took a chance decades ago and they put their careers and their well-being on the line.
Ron Galperin, the first openly gay city official in LA's history, says the exhibit on the bridge also sends a metaphoric message of the work to be done.
We are on a bridge between ignorance and acceptance, between hatred and tolerance, between fear and embrace. And so like all of you, what we have to do is to build bridges and we have to engage in crossing those bridges.
And as those bridges are built, one thing is for sure. As Councilman Mitchell Farrell puts it, "This exhibition is about love winning the day." I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
The "Winning the Freedom to Marry" exhibit will run at City Hall until the end of June. While from folk to hip-hop, Asian-Pacific Americans brought down the house with a free concert outside City Hall. Gil Reyes reports from the Heritage Month celebration.
The music was diverse like the performers onstage. They played rock, rap, urban reggae, and folk, the grand finale of the city's Asian-Pacific-American Heritage Month celebrations.
Proud to be Chinese-American, proud to be Japanese-American, proud to be Korean-American, Pacific Islander, Filipino, and Southeast Asian.
Councilman David Rue, LA's first Korean-American city council member, organized the free event dubbed "The Pacific Bridge Concert." Comedienne Jenny Yang gave a shout-out to other Asian-Pacific-Americans out there.
Samoans, Chamorro, Tongan, Fijian, Marshallese, Palauan, Tahitian, New England's indigenous Mari, Tokelueian. I'm messing this up, I'm so sorry. I'm from Taiwan, I'm so sorry.
Performers included Tribal Theory, Aquafina, Dumbfound Dead, Joseph Vincent, Kevin O., and Run River North.
With the music, with the art, with the films, with the television, people come here to tell their stories. But for too long, we haven't heard the story of Asian and Pacific Americans.
We made it a point to tell everybody to bring your friends, to bring those who might not know about Asian culture or heritage.
So they could experience what Asian-Pacific-American artists have to offer. Outside City Hall, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Grammy-nominated singer Joni Aiko also headlined the concert. While 100% success for a program designed to help students achieve their college dreams is extraordinary, in Boyle Heights, it's life-changing. Rich Samuels reports.
Forty-five students arrived for I Am College Track's first launch to college ceremony. Since before ninth grade, these future-minded Roosevelt High School students have taken part in the program designed to help reach heights they hadn't dreamed of.
I didn't see myself going anywhere. But my parents, my friends, my teachers, College Track gave me support, and I'm grateful for that.
We are a college preparedness and college completion program. What we do is we recruit students the summer before ninth grade, and we support them through college graduation. So we provide eight to 10 years of support. Students come after school several times a week. We provide academic support, homework help, tutoring, ACT preparation. We do leadership development.
College Track has worked with students in underserved areas across the country. Thanks in part to entertainer Will I Am and his I Am Angel Foundation, I Am College Track Boyle Heights opened up in 2012. That first class of eighth graders is graduating today.
You guys did this, right? We would've been happy if it was 20% graduation. I would've been like, "Yo, I told you a couple of kids wanted to do it." But like, all of you guys?
It shows in a community where only 5% of the residents today have a four-year college degree, you'll change those numbers.
Our children here in Boyle Heights can achieve their God-given potential if given that chance, and that's what tonight's all about.
Adella Lopez, who nearly dropped out of school in eighth grade, found new hope thanks to College Track and her family.
They saw the potential in me that I couldn't yet see in myself. Putting all my faith in them, I signed up.
After four years of hard work, Adella is heading to Whittier College with a $28,000 yearly scholarship. From the true heart of Boyle Heights, this is Rich Samuels for LA this week.
The College Track program was founded in 1995 by Lorraine Powell Jobs and Carlos Watson. While the city hosts an event to raise awareness on an ongoing revitalization project, Rasha Goel has the details.
Louis McAdams, known as the godfather of the LA River and president of the Friends of the Los Angeles River, was honored as the LA River Hero at the city's recent celebration of the Third Annual LA River Day.
It's embarrassingly great, you know? I mean, I feel like I'm grateful to the river for allowing us to work there. You know, it's really, it's really a kind of mystical connection that I can't explain or why I've been doing it all these years.
McAdams joined other organizations at City Hall to spread awareness and talk about the efforts being taken for the LA River revitalization.
I'm working to preserve the communities along the river as well. As we move forward, we cannot leave our communities behind, as well as working to create a permanent revenue stream that will allow us to improve our infrastructure, restore habitat, help clean up brownfields, and provide a more livable community.
The LA River is a 51-mile stretch that starts from the San Fernando Valley and empties out into Long Beach. Now, as officials celebrate Los Angeles River Day, they say there's plenty to do down here for Angelenos.
Kayak the LA River. You know, the first time that I kayaked, which was maybe five years ago, and as much as I had been in and around the LA River for a good part of my career, it just felt different.
There's a lot of recreational activities that you could do in the river, like swimming, boating, biking, and also fishing.
Lou works with Friends of the LA River, a nonprofit organization whose mission is to protect and restore the natural and historic heritage of the LA River and educate the public.
It's our mobile museum where we will, we take it to community events and schools to educate students and adults about the river's past, present, and future.
The LA River's vibrant past has helped inspire the preservation and revitalization of this urban waterway. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
For more information and updates on the LA River, visit lariver.org. While city officials kick off LGBTQ Month in LA, two new city apps open a window into the city's expenditures. A local decathlon team gets a special honor for the fifth time. All these stories in City B. LA Mayor Eric Garcetti joined Councilmembers Mike Bonin and Mitchell Farrell, Controller Ron Galperin, and City Attorney Mike Fuhr to officially kick off LGBTQ Heritage Month in Los Angeles City Council. Four members of the trans community were honored for their activism and community service on behalf of all LGBTQ Angelenos.
We stand proudly, shoulder to shoulder, as one tribe, all people, all colors. Thank you.
City Controller Ron Galperin launched two new mobile optimized apps. Checkbook LA and Payroll Explore make it easier than ever for the public and policymakers to see how the city spends money. Checkbook LA has information on all the goods and services purchased by the city, while Payroll Explore makes it easy to monitor the city's number-one expense, payroll. Users can see an individual employee's pay and benefits. Galperin said the apps make the city's financials more transparent for everyone. LA City Councilmember Mitchell Englander joined Granada Hills Charter High School and the community in the unveiling of an official City of Los Angeles street sign honoring the school's academic decathlon team, which won its fifth national title in the last six years.
And I feel like it's an important message to send to the community. It's something that we need to represent our school and our community as one of the greatest in the nation, and I feel like that's something that I'm proud of.
Looking for a summer job? Well, Uber is hiring fluent Spanish speakers to join its growing fleet. Gil Reyes has more.
Ride-hailing service Uber is hiring. This recruitment drive taking place at the Latino-based Silesian Boys and Girls Club for a reason. Their goal is to hire 12,000 new drivers over the next year, and they're specifically targeting Spanish-speaking job applicants. Uber has openings for its Uber Español service. Spanish-speaking drivers are needed to serve Spanish-speaking customers.
In government, we're constantly talking about job creation, and I'm hopeful that these new services offered by Uber today will be an opportunity for those wishing to embark on a new way to create more income.
Councilman Joe Buscaino says he frequently uses Uber, a ride-sharing service you can hail on your smartphone. There's no extra cost for Uber Español. Make the selection by simply pressing a button inside the Uber app.
Economically, does it work out for you? Does it help you out a lot?
I guess it does.
Uber driver Beatrice Almerez says she makes around $1,000 a week working full-time for the company.
People think that it's, that it's, you know, you work only weekends. Yeah, you make some money on the weekends, like 400, 500, if you work, you know? But if you really want to make money, you have to work full-time.
And the requirements?
21 or older. They have to have a car. 2006 or newer. They have to have their own private insurance by California law, and they have to have a social security number.
Uber hopes to drive the point home with more recruitment events in Latino-rich neighborhoods throughout the year. At the Silesian Boys and Girls Club in Boyle Heights, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Uber has also hosted sign-ups in South LA, Exposition Park, Echo Park, and Pacoima. While sample some of California's best wines while taking in a killer view of the city, global culture and music take center stage during some grand performances, and enjoy a film festival where filmmakers unleash their unique and uncensored voices. All this and this week's things to do. With stunning views overlooking the city, Barnesdale Park welcomes Angelenos 21-years and older to sip wine, picnic, and watch the sunset for another not-to-be-miss season of wine tasting at the iconic cultural destination. Marking its eighth season and attracting sellout crowds, the renowned Barnesdale Friday Night Wine Tastings, the foundation's signature fundraising event, returns to the hill and continues every Friday through September 2nd. The wine tasting takes place on the West Lawn from 5:30 to 8:30 PM. For more, visit barnesdel.org. Grand Performances brings artists and audiences together by thoughtfully curating an array of music, dance, film, and spoken word, featuring great artists from around the globe in our very own streets of LA. The event connects Angelenos to art and artists, artists to audiences, audiences to each other, and gives Angelenos a unique experience from bombastic and grand to intimate and thought-provoking. On Saturday, June 18th, check out Soy Africano at 8:00 PM, and on Sunday, enjoy flutes across the world at 3:00 PM at the California Plaza. For more, visit grandperformances.org. The Hollywood Fringe Festival is an annual open-access, community-derived event celebrating freedom of expression and collaboration in the performing arts community. Each June during the Hollywood Fringe, the arts infiltrate the Hollywood neighborhood. Theaters, parks, clubs, churches, restaurants, and other unexpected places host hundreds of productions by local, national, and international arts companies and independent performers. This free-for-all approach underlines the festival's mission to be a platform for artists to exhibit the most diverse and cutting-edge points of view the world has to offer. For show locations, dates, and times, visit hollywoodfringe.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana K., and from all of us here at LA this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Good morning. It is Wednesday, June 15th. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call a roll?
Pluminfield, Bonnabuscaino, Cidio, Angler, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Carretts, Cracorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Free, Weston, ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. Could a first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Cracorian moves. Fuentes seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Weezer moves. Bonin seconds.
Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that Item 1 be continued to July 26.
Without objection, that'd be the order.
Very good, sir. Items 2 through 5 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on Item 2. And, Mr. President, for Items 3 through 5, there's been a request to close the public hearing and continue consideration of those items to June 29.
So ordered.
Mr. President, we should vote on that matter.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, Items 6 through 17 are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items 10 and 17 have been submitted and circulated for council's consideration. consideration.
Okay, let us... Mr. Weezer?
Number 16 special, please.
Okay. You're doing a Tom LeBonds now.
Yes, I am. Just today.
I'm gonna let you go today.
Okay.
All right, let's hold Mr. Weezer's item and let's prepare to vote the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Continue.
17 forthwith, please. 17 forthwith.
17 forthwith.
Thank you.
Continue.
Very, very good, sir. That brings us to Items 18 through 28, or items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on 18, 26, 27, and 28.
Let's hold those items and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over one week for a second read unless reconsidered later with 12 members.
Okay, when we get 12, we should today, please remind me. Continue.
That brings us to Items 29 through 33. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Mr. Cracorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Items 29 through 32 have been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends the city attorney's recommendations. Those matters are routine settlements and can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns. I'd ask that Item 33 be considered in closed session, and although we're not there, Item 34 in the special meeting as well.
Okay, so let's deal with 29 through 32. Mr. Clerk, you want to read those items?
Very good, sir. Item 29 in the case entitled Dulce Jasmine Garcia versus Miguel Vasquez et al., there's a recommendation to expend $465,000 in settlement. For Item 30, in the case entitled Azerial Heath et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $250,000 in settlement. For Item 31, in the case entitled George Mahia versus... excuse me, George Mahia and Paul Valencia versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $1,350,000 in settlement. And for Item 32, in the case entitled Sean Shay Clark versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend $150,000 in settlement.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. President, if we can, Item 3 forthwith, please.
Without objection.
Thank you.
Okay, let's vote on reconsider...
Excuse me, sir. Which item did you want?
I'm told that's been continued.
That's been continued?
Yes, sir.
Why is that? We've already... okay. Understood. I've just been advised by the city attorney that we have to continue it.
Okay. Now, let's vote on Item 10 for reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, we'll hold that item. Let's continue.
Mr. President, that brings council back to presentations or items called special.
Mr. Price, are you prepared to... Mr. Price, are you prepared to start with your presentation?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I want to take a moment to honor a very special group of immigrant rights advocates, leaders, and humanitarians. Why don't you join me, please? All of you. I'd like to acknowledge Crius, an organization from El Salvador, and a few members who are here with us today. Gloria Ventura, Cristobal Hernandez, and Raul Mariana. These are a few of the folks behind the Monsignor Romero pilgrimage, the migrant's passage. For the past month, our friends have taken part in a pilgrimage for immigrant rights that started in El Salvador, passed through Guatemala, made its way to Mexico, and is now here in Southern California. The group's pilgrimage was a visual for people to reflect and better understand the plight of immigrants. It's meant to symbolize the human suffering and sacrifice endured by millions of immigrants who risk their lives in pursuit of a better life. Throughout their trek, our friends have carried a five-by-seven, life-size statue of Monsignor Oscar Romero, and I think it's coming up on the board, a Catholic Archbishop whose teachings focused on humane treatment of all people. Today, his legacy remains strong in both El Salvador and the United States as a symbol of hope, compassion, and kindness. Romero's image and pilgrims will continue visiting churches of different denominations in California, spreading the message of justice embodied by the beloved Salvadorian Archbishop. I commend this organization for creating consciousness on this very important issue and reminding us to do our part in protecting the lives and human dignity of migrants worldwide. It's this message that is very close to home in my district, which is predominantly Latino, including many Salvadorians. Now I'd like to turn the microphone over to Raul, who can talk about the Los Angeles connection and provide details of the group's journey, experiences, and what's ahead. Raul?
Thank you, sir. Good morning, council members. Crius, Consejo Romerista Intersectorial El Salvador. I want to say thank you for this warming welcome, this precious city hall, but always to do for our community. Today, we are not complete because most of our members had to flew back to our country because they have a designation and their own jobs. We was... we started this journey, we was 35 persons. Now, we only crossed the border seven, and you know why. Also, we want to say a special thank you to council member for the District 9, Mr. Corrin Price, for always being a friend of Salvadoran community and be part of our dreams. Mention apart because he was the captain mayor for the Dia de Salvadorino 2015 festival. He honoring us with his presence, making more successful and attractive our festivity. We want to appreciate his staff, Angelina, Mike, because they are wonderful people with open arms and open heart. His staff is a people who have a compromise with the community. I want to take a time to invite Mr. Corrin Price for this coming Dia de Salvadorino Festival 2016 for our honor table. Crius is organization created for many organizations in El Salvador, which include more than 10 different churches like Episcopal, Methodist, Catholic, Evangelistic, Lutheran, and many others, also business, civilian, government, Red Cross, Green Cross, post office, etc. Why Monsignor Romero, we choosing him? Because the life and work of Monsignor Romero is the cultural and religious patrimony not only of the Salvadoran people but of all humanity. Oscar Romero, a great evangelist and martyr of the 20th century, the pastor who defend the dignity of human being for demanding truth, justice, for victim of human rights. He say, "Si me matan, resucitaré al pueblo." If they kill me, I will raise my people. La voz de la justicia nadie la puede matar. Now, no one can kill the voice of justice. He was the voice for the people who have... don't have a voice. But the government kill him at the time he was raising the bread and wine by the sniper on March 24, 1980, at the La Divina Providencia Church in San Salvador. With the message of Monsignor Romero, Crius want to share the good news for all those are suffering in the danger journey looking for a better life for this family. The immigrant are not dangerous. They are in danger. These people just want to work and be a good citizens. With the pilgrimage, we want to demand a truly, a full of respect for the human right for all of those who transit a different ways and countries. These people deserve a better treat from civilian, private, state, federal authorities, and because all person in this world have the universal right to immigrate, science conception of our humanity. Thank you. I just want to say something. I want to ask the hills of EU to please consider it, to give us the permit to celebrate our festival, El Dia de Salvadorino, for this night, 2016. We promise to respect the city love like we always do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's give it up again for Crius and these pilgrims who are making a statement, not only for El Salvador but for the United States as well.
Give a round of applause.
This is for you.
Okay, we have 12 members. Let's reconsider the ordinances, Mr. City Attorney. So if you would identify them, we will vote on reconsideration and then vote on the actual items.
Mr. President, those would be Items 8 and 19 through 25.
Okay. This first vote is on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Now we'll actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Good morning, Mr. President. Colleagues, thank you so much. Please join me in welcoming the second grade class, teachers, and parents from Citizens of the World Charter School in Hollywood.
Stand up. Stand up. Wave to the camera, you're on television.
These young students, and the school's mission is to create a high-achieving public school for a diverse community of students developing their abilities, confidence, and sense of responsibility for themselves and their community. Children, welcome to L.A. City Hall.
Okay, can the camera go? Keep going. We've got young people on the right side. There they are. Now you guys are... wave. Your moms and... they can watch you later tonight. Anyways, give them another round of applause. And thank you, guys. Thank you so much for visiting with us today. Good to see you. Mr. Price, it's my understanding you want to recognize someone else.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I'm joined by our colleague, Marquise Harris Dawson, also Henry Chisholm, president of the L.A. Black Personnel Association, and Kevin Smith from the Oscar Joe Bryant Foundation. We're here to celebrate and recognize Juneteenth, a day of celebration observing the end of slavery in the United States. Juneteenth is a cultural... the origin of Juneteenth stems from the month of June and the 19th day of the month, which not only commemorates African-American freedom but also represents the journey to establish equality now. On September 22, 1862, during the American Civil War, President Lincoln declared the freedom of African-Americans in the Emancipation Proclamation, urging the Confederate states to return to the Union and to free all slaves effective January 1, 1863. In the Confederate states, slaves had the ability to overhear the information regarding the Civil War, but many in Texas did not receive the news until much later, at the end of the Civil War. It was after June 19, 1865, that slavery formally ended in Texas, approximately three years after the issuance of the Emancipation Proclamation, thus the commemoration of Juneteenth.
So although slavery formally ended a year before, folks in Texas did not get the word. I think what's important about Juneteenth, that's it's a celebration. One of the reasons, there were many, one of the reasons why slaves in Texas didn't get the word is because when the federal government sent messengers to Texas, people from Texas would meet them before they got there and do away with them so that the word never got to Texas. And so eventually slaves through a network were able to figure out and word came to Texas, and that was the first state to celebrate and recognize Juneteenth. And so Juneteenth is especially important to us here in Southern California, as many African-American families originate from Texas and are part of the Juneteenth celebration. And so that's why we do picnics and barbecues and all the rest in celebration of this important day. But it's another reminder, and we get them all the time. Freedom isn't free. It doesn't just happen. It happens because people fight for it.
Again, just want to acknowledge the Los Angeles Association of Black Personnel, Henry Chisholm, the Oscar Joe Bryant Foundation, Kevin Smith, for their enduring support and participation, making sure that we do not forget this history. And now I'd like to invite up Carmen Hawkins, our deputy city attorney, who's also the president of the Black City Attorneys Association, for some comments.
Good morning. As we begin to recognize Juneteenth, which is actually June 19, with the celebration that my affinity organizations will be having this Saturday in San Pedro, Juneteenth for all of us becomes ultimately more important as the civil rights, the things that came not only from the Civil War through the civil rights struggle of the 50s and 60s. Those rights that have been put in place are now being eroded on an ongoing basis, not only as to African-Americans but as to women, as to our LGBT community. And I always have a saying to my children, if we do not know our history, we're doomed to repeat it. And as I continue to hear the words that we must get back to the good old days, the good old days were not good for those of us who did not have the rights that were guaranteed to us under the United States Constitution. So as we move forward throughout the month of June, we must take our time to, you know, renew ourselves and to step up and make sure that our voices continue to be heard in this struggle.
Well said. Well said.
Thank you. Mr. Chisholm?
I'd just like to say that our organization was started by Mayor Tom Bradley, and at that time, he felt that it was important that minorities who worked for the city organize themselves and advocate for their inclusion into the city family. Our core mission is to provide training for exams as they come up during the personnel's exam opening periods. And we hold sessions to prepare our students, students, but employees to take those exams. We also give away scholarships, and on Saturday next week, we'll be giving away 25 scholarships to family members of our organization, and our scholarships are also open to anyone who may apply. So we want to encourage education and employment.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I'm Kevin Smith, president of Oscar Joe Bryant Foundation. Oscar Joe Bryant Foundation was named after the third Los Angeles... the third African-American Los Angeles police officer that was killed in the line of duty in 1968. The organization has... was originally founded to support the sworn and civilian employees of LAPD and to make sure that the promotional process was fair across the board and that we were entitled to specialized units and also making sure that employment practices were fair across the board for African-Americans, which today we're still having issues with making sure that African-Americans are getting hired through the department. The organization also gives out $25,000 a year for our members in scholarships as well as... well as we do reimbursement for training and reimbursement for tuition for our members. Thank you.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, again, thank you for your attention. I just want you to know that Juneteenth isn't just a time for celebration, but certainly a time for rededication and reflection. And so we appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more note. On Saturday, we will be at Point Furman Park in San Pedro, celebrating Juneteenth between the two organizations, and it's open to the public, and we invite anyone that wants to come out from 11 to 4 p.m. We'll have a live band, we'll have raffles, we'll have prizes, we'll have games for the kids, and we're trying to build our festival into something larger for the community, as well as at some point in time, hopefully adding a health fair to it. Thank you.
Okay, if you could just stay for a second, Mr. Price. Hold on. Mr. Buscayena?
No, actually, thanks for making the pitch. We're happy to host in San Pedro Juneteenth celebration the last several years. I do want to recognize your leadership at the podium, Mr. Price, Mr. Marquise Harris-Dawson. And current, we celebrated Juneteenth together last year at Peck Park, this year at Point Furman. It's going to be, continue to be, it is ever-growing and gives us an opportunity to reflect on the sacrifices that were made and the contributions that were made. And it's great to see so many families of all ages, generation after generation, come to the picnic, and I'm really proud to continue to support it through my office as well as the citywide effort. So thank you for your leadership. I do want to give a shout out to Joe Gatlin, who has been on the ground for many, many years, putting this picnic together and this celebration. And Joe, if you're listening, thank you so much for your commitment and leadership to you and your committee. So thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Oh, let's take the pitch.
Let's give our young people another round of applause, too. Thank you for visiting us. We hope you guys have a nice day. And thanks for all the parents and chaperones, for teachers, for bringing our young people today. We really appreciate you. Mr. Hunt, why don't you leave the children alone and sit down?
Yeah.
They didn't, no, they didn't come here. Mr. Fuentes?
We should make sure that our children know today that in these really important halls, we allow all sorts of speech to be communicated. And so I want the children to understand and their teachers, hopefully they can make this a lesson, that we have to tolerate all sorts of speech. And what the gentleman with the hood is doing today is an absolute embarrassment in terms of what speech means to this country. So to have him here to greet the children is not just horrifying, but absolutely an insult to these chambers. That is my moment of free speech, and I wanted to share that with the teachers and the students. And so hopefully they can go ahead and enunciate that lesson when they get back to the class.
We appreciate that, Mr. Fuentes. We're just going to watch them exit. Mr. Weezer, you want to do 16, Item 16?
Sure. Well, thank you, Mr. President. And this is, and I want to thank Mr. Blumenfield for championing this through your committee. I am excited to support this item today. The sober unit is innovative, forward-thinking, and something we should be doing throughout the city. This is something that is going to be done in the Skid Row area. Fire Station 9, which serves the Skid Row area and most of downtown proper, has been number one or two in the county for the past five or so years for being the busiest fire station. The fire station is bombarded by calls all day and night, not for fires, but for patients that are mentally ill or overdosing on drugs or alcohol. This sober unit will be able to bypass traditional bureaucracy and truly help those in need with long-term solutions. The partnership between the fire department, LSA's outreach workers, and the county sobering center is a model of how we can address the homeless crisis under the comprehensive strategy we now have in place. With LSA's help in identifying those most in need and with the resources of the county sobering center, we will hopefully free up other resources for the fire department. Each person that the sober unit transfers to the sobering unit will be one less ambulance trip for those patients, freeing valuable resources for the fire station number nine. I support expanding these types of programs to other areas of the city. As I have said before, our city needs to move away from only focusing on one area in the city because homelessness is really a citywide issue. However, however, the effectiveness and low cost of this program goes hand in hand with a freestanding sobering center based here in Skid Row and the concentrated population there. I hope this pilot will show the success and innovation so that other parts of the city can benefit as well. And where there is a demand for another sobering center elsewhere in the city, we should all support that. So I want to thank the fire department, the county department of health services, and LSA for this innovative approach to dealing with people in need and also freeing up resources for other critical needs in the community. This program demonstrates the importance of working together to create progressive solutions for homelessness. I thought I'd just bring this to everyone's attention about some innovation that's happening so that we could think about and focus on this and see this success and hopefully replicate it throughout the rest of the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Let's move on to Item 26. Mr. Walsh on Item 26.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or blogging at J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Item 26, again, you do an excellent job on lighting and renting and protecting, and I, the reason you do an excellent job is the father of us all, Tom Bradley. Remember when we had a black mayor in this city worked? HollywoodHighlands.org, removing, this is removing liens on property. In other words, these landlords allowed their property to go to pot. The apartment dwellers went to the city, and the city said, from now on, don't pay your rent, pay your rent to us, not to your landlord. Boy, you can see how quickly they changed their tune once they're not getting the rent. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, Item 27.
Item 27 concerns the Expo Metro Line Construction Authority and appointing an alternate. We don't need alternates. We don't have them on the MTA board. The Expo line is the biggest, the extension to the seat, is the biggest flop you've ever had. You don't see them congratulating themselves in the LA Times for the ridership. Go out there now. The parking lots are empty. They are almost totally empty. Ridership at one point was 14,000 boardings. That's 7,000 people in a county of 10 million people. No one is using it, and now you want to pass a tax, half cent sales tax...
No, stay on the subject.
The half cent sales tax will be to improve the Expo line. The Expo line is an absolute abject failure.
Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, we're going to do Item 28.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, this again is one of your rewards. This one for $75,000. They've got a rule. If they think it's a, if it's a black person who was killed, it's $50,000. If it's a white person, it's $75,000. We're talking about injury to Jake Elston. Now we have rewards for injuries. Oh, that's right, must have been white. I'm telling you right now, these rewards mean nothing because snitches get stitches. Go to Google that, snitches get stitches. And I'm telling you what's happening here. No one's going to rat out who murdered this person. Of course, they'd have their brains blown out by the gangs, and you're all chicken shit about the gangs, too. You suck the gang's cock.
Stay on the subject. No, no, you're disrupting the meeting, Mr. Walsh. Don't do it again. Mr. Hunt?
The Red Team Hunt for the record. Goddamn free speech is a sum of bitches.
No, stay on the subject, okay?
I am.
No, you stay on the subject.
I'm getting ready to talk about the $75,000 goddamn reward money. Hell, do you want me to talk about it? So it's the white people get one thing and the black people get another thing. Say $75,000 reward for the white folks, $50,000 for the black folks. How do you like that there? Is that what our forefathers wrote? Goddamn sum of bitches, give a white boy $75,000.
Don't, do not yell into the machine, all right? Into the microphone. Before we vote, our standard reward for anyone is $50,000. So anyway, with that said, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item 2, Mr. Walsh. Do I have a Carmen Potts come forward, followed by Mr. Hunt? And this is on Item 2.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is my second appearance on this issue. No one has come out to observe the location and fully assess that our property will be blocked in if this vacation is allowed. The petitioner would like the alley vacated purely for control of a parking lot, which is their property, but it joins to our property. So the exit and entrance to my property, where I'm a resident, will be locked in or landlocked by the petitioner of this particular alley vacation. I was contacted by John White, who believed that the location was at Flower and Grand, which is on the other side of Figueroa. We are west of Figueroa, and no one has come out to properly meet with us and assess this location. We're asking that this vacation not be granted. That's it.
Thank you.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, she's exactly right. See her color skin? You don't give a shit when a black person comes up here and says that this is destroying their property. This is an all-white jury. You like to suck the cock of white people.
Stay on the subject.
HollywoodHighlands.org. And I just want everybody who votes against this black homeowner to realize what's happening, including white boy Price. I'm telling you right now, this woman told you, this has nothing to do with gang reduction. The gangs rule the city. Everybody knows it. But what are you doing now? I'm telling you, this woman, if you were white and you lived west of La Brea, they'd be kissing your white ass. But you're black, and they don't give a fucking shit whether you live or die. All 15 of these and also your faggot mayor. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Hunt?
Red Team Hunt for the record. They won't keep these goddamn niggers out of the alley. So hey, when you come to them and you come to the goddamn alley, keep them niggers out of there. I don't know what the fuck is going on. There's too many goddamn niggers in gang reduction over there. You white sons of bitches, you know, y'all want to keep them goddamn niggers out of there? Son of a bitches. Goddamn gang reduction on Figueroa. Goddamn white motherfuckers. Get it done. Goddamn nigger haters.
Okay, what we're going to do, we are going to hold this, it's my understanding, Mr. Harris-Dawson, we're going to hold this on the desk for a moment, but we will close the public comment on this item. So we'll hold this and then we'll move on.
Mr. President, that's a matter scheduled for closed session.
Okay, but I have a... Okay, so sergeants, if you would clear the chambers.
Speaker out of order, Item 33.
No, you're out of order. Sit down. You're out of order. Sergeants, clear the chambers. We're getting ready to go into closed session. Sergeants, clear the chambers. We're getting ready to go into closed session.
...
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Mr. Walsh, item thirty-four.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. You didn't report out any action taken during the closed session. This is another super secret. This case is so horrible that I don't wanna mention, I don't wanna even say what happened. This is the Razor versus the City of Los Angeles court case. They're not gonna tell you what's happening. The LA Times, you know, the LA Times isn't gonna do this story because David Sanhauser fantasizes about sucking off the mayor and this above-racing case concerning the municipal code eighty-five point oh-two. I'm gonna put this on my website, and this, let me tell you the law. The law says you can discuss a case in closed session, but you must report out any action taken. They just went in, didn't report out any action. And I'm sure that you cocksuckers up there, white cocksuckers, I don't count Sadio. I just, I'm sure when you come back, you will not report out what action you took because this case is so incredibly shocking, and David Sanhauser's got his finger up his ass.
Next speaker, Mr. Previn. Item thirty-four, sir.
Thank you, Council President Martinez. It is Eric Previn here in the special meeting on item thirty-four, which is the Razor case. Now Razor is an interesting character. This is, I don't know the man or have never met the guy, but he's apparently a pro-per. And what happened, Mr. Sadio, is he got into difficulties sleeping in his vehicle in 2009, I believe, in March. And then it happened again in January of 2011, and then again in February of 2013. And Mr. Fuer has been struggling with the bad law eighty-fifty-two, eighty-five point oh-two, section eighty-five point oh-two. In fact, I believe that today... In fact, I believe that today there was a motion to repeal that particular one, and it will be replaced with hopefully a more humane law that has been vetted by Mr. Bonin and others. Now, I can only say that this case came to my attention because I tracked the Cheyenne Desert Train case, which is a related case about sleeping in the cars. Now, we have been, as we all know, yesterday Margaret Lee Thomas declared an emergency alongside this group that tried to declare emergency, and everybody knows and is working in that direction. But we have to find a balance that is more humane than, for example, restricting vehicles and restricting people from sleeping in their vehicles. It is not by choice. I can guarantee you that, that people want to sleep in a small and uncomfortable. Now, the people who are living in motorhomes, you have set up a pernicious set of no large vehicles in the area, no oversized vehicles in the area, set of ordinances that I've been tracking over many months, and I don't know if you're going to get in trouble. Maybe that's for truckers who are pulling off the freeway. You know, it just, that's what I thought initially. But I got to tell you, I'm worried. I'm worried that what's happening is we are trying once again to use the power of enforcement as opposed to the power of problem solving. And I don't have the billions of dollars you need, so it does sound like we're going to have to work collectively to find that money. But, but we have to do something, and we cannot go around waking people up in the middle of the night and taking them out of their vehicles. And Mr. Razor, whoever he is, should be, you know, given a small honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. And Mr. Sadio, attorney? No more cards?
Counsel is authorized to go into closed session on this matter pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D one.
Thank you, Sargents. Can you please help us prepare the room for closed session on item thirty-four?
Yeah, closed session.
[685.38]
Mr. Clerk, we're back in open session. What's before us?
Madam President, we have item 34. There's been a request to refer that matter to the Homelessness and Poverty Committee.
Okay, without objection, what's next?
Madam President, would you like to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular?
Yes, let's adjourn our special meeting at this time and go back to our regular meeting.
Very good. That brings us to...
We are going to... There's been a request, Mr. Clerk, that we refer item 18 back to Homelessness and Poverty Committee.
Very good, ma'am.
So we're going to move on to item 10?
That's item 10, called "Special" for Councilmember Rue. There's been an amending motion 10A that has been circulated and is now before council for consideration.
There are a number of courts on this item. Okay, on item 10, I have a number of speakers. The first speaker is Melissa Bailey Wong.
Hi, my name is Melissa Bailey Wong. I am the parent of Jade Bailey Wong, my daughter, who is the property owner at 530 South Rossmore Avenue. I would just like to say that I thank very much everybody here for trying to help in the cause that we have and trying to create accessibility for my daughter Jade. We have worked with the City Hall for over a year in trying to create access to the home. I feel we've reached a great deal of consensus in terms of how we can actually accommodate my daughter's needs with a driveway access which is actually is in character with the rest of the neighborhood and have worked with HPOZ to do that in such a way with various clauses. I know that there was one outstanding clause, that was Article 15, I believe, which was regarding whether or not this item or the driveway would have to be reversed upon my daughter's death or if we moved out of the home. And considering this would take a considerable financial burden upon us, we have requested that that actually be denied and that we don't have to suffer the burden of paying not only for the installation of the accessibility for my daughter, but actually for the removal of it as well. I do understand that there have been discussions and that there may be a way that we can find an amendment that will actually allow us to be able to forfeit the burden. And I'm extremely grateful for any help that you have been able to afford, the Bailey Wong family.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Luke Bailey Wong.
I'm the father of Jade Bailey Wong. Shortly after we had Jade, there was a statistic that was given to me that was, I found quite shocking. And it was from a social worker at an institution that Jade was in. And she said, "I wish you all the best because you should know that 80% about 80% of families don't stay together in these situations when they have a child so incapacitated." And that kind of shook me and I thought, "What? Why not?" And why it's relevant is that, yes, it's challenging to get the medical care for Jade. It is enormously challenging. But it's very time-consuming and heartbreaking to have to advocate so strongly over such a period of time. You know, running the house by my wife's done a fantastic job. I can't tell you how many meetings that she's had, how many hours she's put into this over the last year and a half to be able to be granted a driveway which the people in our block, you know, 11 out of the 16 people in the block have a circular driveway. We've just been trying to get that so she could have our, you know, therapy workers, our nurses, our child can access and exit easily. And I know that a lot of people can agree with that. I just hope going forward, there is some way that there can be a way where families can be expedited through and that there can be someone who is able to... We've spoken to so many different departments. As you know, you get bogged down in regulations and policies. And for a lot of people who might not even have the education, I think that they would be completely overwhelmed. And if anything can be done to help that, I'd be gratefully appreciative. And we're very grateful for what has been done here today and all the assistance to the family. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience this morning and waiting for us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Leah Renee, followed by Eric Previn.
Hi, Mayor Garcetti and honorable council members. Leah Renee here is an independent person and stakeholder in the city of Los Angeles. I respectfully request that the city allows this family to install and then permanently keep a circular drive at 530 Rossmore, per the Federal Fair Housing Act, the Los Angeles Municipal Code, and the U.S. Constitution, because the Los Angeles Municipal Code 12.22A.25F states, "If the director determines that, one, the modification is physically integrated into the residential structure and cannot easily be removed." The Los Angeles Municipal Code 12.03 defines "structure" "as anything constructed or erected which is supported directly or indirectly on earth, but is not a vehicle." Clearly, a driveway is not a vehicle. Therefore, it's a structure. So they should be allowed to keep it because it's almost impossible to remove a driveway. Additionally, I fact-checked the neighborhood independently on Google Earth, and you could all check it as well. You've been handed, each one of you's been handed this diagram, and you could see that they comply with the HPOZ. They're actually asking you for a circular driver, just like at the Getty House, where the mayor lives. See, 530 South Rossmore is the only property on their block who doesn't have a circular driveway or a turnaround. And if you go from Fifth Street to Wilshire, there's 16 properties and 11 of them have circular driveways. Only four would have straight driveways. So you're actually, they're just asking you to comply and be given the same right that everybody has on their block and 70% have on their area. So I'm asking you to please uphold the law and grant them something that clearly they have a hardship. And we ask you that the city of Los Angeles do the right thing and allow them to keep their circular driveway as part of their residential property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Eric Previn, followed by Herman and Wayne Spindler.
Yes, it is Eric Previn. And this is a no-brainer, and I appreciate that the city is going to accommodate this...
Excuse me, Mr. Previn. Can I ask Mr. Herman to please take a seat? I'm going to have you escorted by our sergeants.
You called me up, ma'am?
No.
Sit down. Sorry about that, Mr. Previn. Please continue.
Yeah, it's Eric Previn from the Second District. You should put some time back on because you interrupted me. Yeah, thank you. No, you didn't put any time back on, but that's fine. Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's not appropriate to do that, but it's Eric Previn from the Second District. I'm trying to make a presentation on this item 10, which is about the family that has a disabled child who have been struggling for a year and a half to get an accommodation that finally, I believe today, is going to be made possible thanks to the efforts of many of you, I assume. Good work. So why did it take a year and a half is kind of a post-mortem on this. And, you know, is that a typical timing on people? And if someone said, "Yes, it's very typical," you know, welcome to our world. That's upsetting, if that's true. If, in fact, it's been delayed because of what I'll describe as the fear of litigation, which is the fear of litigation on Monday, but on Tuesday, it's the, "Hey, guys, here's a great way to get through." Because, of course, we are regularly making accommodations for some groups without barely a wink. And yet other groups are held at bay for a very long time to do things that, in this particular case, are inarguably needed and should have been granted immediately. So in 30 seconds, what could we do as a city to do a better job? Maybe there should be, and there probably is, a city attorney who is responsible for making these decisions quickly and helping to facilitate this kind of an accommodation. So that, as the man cited, that very moving point, families come apart over things in this environment. It's a very hard road, and they do not need additional burden. And the city can help with burden because I know some of you have made a career out of trying to do that. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker is Herman, followed by Wayne Spindler.
Individuals with disability are a discreet and insular minority who have been faced with many restrictions and limitations, subjected to a history of purposeful unequal treatment and regulated to a position of political powerlessness. All this family in the Plum Meeting wanted to speak about today is what you heard from the father and the mother of this poor child. None of you have a heart. None of you care about individuals with disability. Welts versus Los Angeles, Varden versus Sacramento, Title 242 USC. Discrimination. Discrimination. And for what purpose? Individuals want the same equal access. Stop discriminating against programmatic access. Do you hear me? My name is Herman. I speak on behalf of all individuals with disability. I want more. Feed me more. The machine in me is kicking because I believe in purpose, meaningful society for all people of disability, including my mother. So my heart and hard feelings go out to the family here. Give them a driveway. Individual disability impacts one person, and you can't change the law? You can't change the regulations? That's offensive. You are so offensive.
Next speaker, Wayne Spindler.
This disgusting situation happened yesterday in the Plum Committee. We got Marquisi, we got Wheezy Weezer, and then we got Fuentes, who were going to say no. But one man stood up. Not as, I'm not his biggest fan. We're here because of Gil Sadio. Because Gil Sadio told the machine, "Time out." This is bullshit. Gil Sadio did that. He stood up. And I hope, you're not going to zoom the camera in on my face. I want you to zoom the camera behind me and see this child. Zoom in and see this child. You're going to say no to that child? We're not going to say no to that child. We're going to do everything to make sure that that child has everything that that child needs. Everything. Everything. And I forgot yesterday, this is CD 4. I forgot that in CD 4, a real gentleman got elected to the councilman. I should have went up to Councilman Rue yesterday, but I forgot to look. It was in CD 4. The schedule actually said CD 1. I was mistaken. David Rue should have been called yesterday, and he should have came down to Plum, and they should have engaged this conversation yesterday rather than waiting today. Because the city council's not getting involved in the important business. This is the priority business. This takes precedence over everything. And it's treated like a third-class situation. But we got a class act in David Rue, and yesterday, Gil Sadio, listen to the tape, really stood up for programmatic access. So please approve this accommodation.
Okay, that concludes, that concludes comment on this item. Madam Clerk, if you, or Mr. Clerk, did you need to make an announcement?
No, sir. Only that, again, item, amending motion 10A has been distributed and is before council for consideration.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 aye.
That's approved. Let's go now to, and we, we're going to go now to general public comment. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Sadio.
Yes, before that, I would like to move to reconsider item number three for Friday, June 17.
I didn't, I'm sorry, Mr. Sadio.
Yes, I'd like to move to reconsider item number three for Friday, June 17.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay.
Mr. President, item three has been reconsidered and is now before you. There's been a request to continue that matter to this Friday, June 17.
Without objection. Item two, we're going to continue to Friday as well. Okay? Mr. Weezar?
Mr. President, can we reconsider item number five and continue it to June 17, please?
To what now, June?
June 17.
Okay, let's, on that item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
We'll continue that item to Friday as well. Mr. Krikorian?
Mr. President, I'd ask that items 29 through 33 be sent forthwith, please.
Without objection. Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Hunt.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. Great news, great news, another victory for us. You saw all the newspaper's front page. Herb Wesson accused Wayne Spindler of a murder threat. It was brought to Jackie Lacy, a proud black woman who was our DA, and she threw it out. It was thrown out. Where's the proof? Wayne Spindler has it. The media keeps quiet about this. The news media are a bunch of scumbags. They had pictures of Wayne Spindler. Jackie Lacy threw it out. We have documentary proof. Wayne Spindler did not in any way threaten anybody's life. That's not just my goddamn opinion. That's the opinion of Jackie Lacy, who, when, won the election. You racist scumbags, 14 of you.
Mr. Hunt, followed by Mr. Mohammed.
The red chief hunt here. I agree with what he just goddamn saying. Brandonberg versus Ohio protects everybody. Goddamn white niggers here, you guys don't get to say what's offensive or not. That's part of the Brown Act. That's why Ralph M. Brown Act made these goddamn rules. Half you goddamn white niggers don't even understand them. No, you don't get to say what's offensive, O'Farrell. You don't get to tell me when I can stand up. Goddamn white nigger. And who is this other white nigger? Our forefathers wrote the First Amendment. You don't understand it? You sitting in city council, goddamn jackass? Goddamn whole bunch of jackasses right here that don't even understand what our forefathers wrote. You know why? Because you guys don't understand the law. Brandonberg versus Ohio, merely words cannot cause us disruption. Supreme Court, this is what gave the white people the right to march in the goddamn street, goddamn jackasses. Now, O'Farrell, how you like that?
Your time has expired. Mr. Mohammed, followed by Mr. Previn.
Our father, our founder-father left us to protect our rights, but it seem the way that a new generation of politician has strayed away from the, what the father-father father had left. But actually, we should end imperialism. Actually, where Americans have brought those Muslims from Yemen and Syria over here and dumped them in the street. But the polk is the Satan on earth. The polk of Rome is the Satan on earth. In this scripture, the dragon that give a power to the beast, and the beast is political system that destroys the nation of the earth under the polk authority. We should end the black Americans from down Skid Row. Eric Goss said it's a racist. He should be filed and put in federal court for being a racist. Charlie Beck is not enforcing the lottery laws. You should not be able to stand and sleep on the sidewalks as the City of Los Angeles as you will. We need, we need to bridge political responsibility among the minorities. But seem like minorities are not represented. We're not having a...
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, if I can get Mr. Previn and Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Barajas.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from the Second District. There was an item on the agenda today that caught my attention because it was an LLC called Celebrity Realty Holdings LLC. I believe it was item 17 or 15-0565. I scanned quickly just to sort of get a flavor for who is the LLC. Sometimes the LLC is one of our treasurer developers who we know. Sometimes it's somebody we are not so familiar with. But in this case, I was able to dig in slightly, but I hit a wall. There was no names, there's no members of this LLC, and have not been disclosed. Now, since it's down in one of those districts, it's on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, it's, there's two properties, city-owned properties. We're letting them go for 740 grand or something like that, which is a fair market value. Now, I always, my radar goes up when we're getting rid of city stuff and there's not a proper RFP. Maybe there was an RFP. A lot of that was not clear in this item to me. So, maybe just simply identifying those people. I asked the lawyer, whose name is Paul Buck Burke.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Previn. So, if I could get Mr. Herman, Mr. Barajas, and Mr. Spindler.
I do swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Wayne Spindler has been exonerated. You, under 422A PC criminal threats, is perjury. Brandonberg versus Ohio, USC 394, 444, 1969. What the hell is he talking about? There's nothing offensive about tolerating free speech and expression. Hunt versus Los Angeles, Zuma Dog versus Los Angeles. And who other than Matt Dowell talked about the cunts and the penis heads that can't do their fucking job? That's right. 54, 954.3.C. Fuck you, NWA. Bah! And the loser is not in the seat.
All right, your time, your time is expired. If I could get Mr. Spindler, followed by Ms. Renee. Yes?
He's making his way to the microphone. If you could just give us a minute to allow the small children to leave the council chambers who just had to be subjected to Mr. Herman's latest outrageous, disgusting rant. Before Mr. Spindler comes up to speak, could you give that family an opportunity to exit the building before they hear more of the same?
Thank you so much, Mr. Krikorian. We will do that. We will afford the children the opportunity, even though generally with Mr. Barajas, we do not have that problem. Mr. Barajas?
Thank you. Now, look, I think it should be abundantly clear that this country has dived into the precipice of damnation. I think the only way that we can save ourselves is if we recognize the fact that we ourselves have a problem, that we do not take up the leadership that we should be taking in order to submit to, let's just say, the will of God Almighty and Jesus Christ, our Savior. So, let me just say this. If Obama, if you wish to have a country which will not be given to you by Trump, Hillary, or Sanders, but you're going to have to give it to yourselves, and I think that the only way out is you have to reveal the fact that the Saudis, along with the British system, has capitulated and submitted the world into tyrannical rule by this tax that we just witnessed in Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler and Ms. Leah Renee.
Okay, we're going to keep everything nice and cool. And we're going to keep everything nice so that nobody gets upset. And we're going to try to keep it PG-13. And that's why we'll make little noises like kids, and we'll talk like little kids because it's not, there's no adults, there's no, there's no grownups here in the room. It's just us little kids that can't take any criticism. And, well, what are we supposed to do? I can't really talk about anything important. So, we got to go to the adults. Mr. Grody, I have to go to my First Amendment teacher, Mr. Grody, and he may file something called lawsuit papers.
Thank you. Your time is expired.
Hi, Leah Renee. I just wanted to say thank you to Councilman Sadio. Yesterday, we had a, really, an absurd public comment, Plum hearing. And I appreciate you upholding the rule of law instead of the rule of men. It's really important that all of you stand up for the rule of law because there's something going on, and it's going to take all of you, all of us with you. And so, I just wanted to say thank you so much for standing up for the family and speaking up, speaking up, something that could have been done a year ago. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes general public comment. That brings us where?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they are posted, they are referred. Do we have announcements, members? If all would please rise. Please rise for adjourning motions. I'm going to look to my left side. That's Mr. Bloomingfield's side. Don't see anything to my left. I look to my right, do not see anything to my right. Members, this council meeting is adjourned.